Good evening. We'll call the Monday, April 10th Town of Rundle Select Board Meeting to Order. We'll start with the Fledge of Allegiance. Hey, so the first item on the agenda tonight was to conduct interviews with residents interested in, well RSU being appointed to the RSU 21 School Board. We have one applicant, the first applicant that backed out. So we're going to continue on with our normal meeting until 6:30 and then we will start the interviews. We asked that if there are any members of the audience that are the applicants, that if you're not doing your interview, you wait outside and then the rest can come in and we'll do the interview. I just don't think it's fair to have everybody listen in. So we'll call that out when the time gets going. First thing on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Any additions? I do have an RSU 21 School Board Meeting update. Do I have anybody got anything else? Motion by Jason, seconded by Phil. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Okay, next item on the agenda is a public forum. This is where we allow public comment for any non-agenda item. Anybody interested in making a public comment? Here are none. We will move on. Approval of the minutes, March 27, 2023. Motion by Velma to approve as written. Seconded by Tom. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Hey, I have an update on the RSU School Board Meeting of Monday, April 3rd. Started off with Art talked a little bit about the fiscal year 24 school budget. For those of you that were in attendance at the last meeting, the Budget School Board Our budget meetings. There was more money that was given to by the state. So our share is down to 6.69%. Kennebunk is 6.04 and Kennebunk Board is 3.35. So we saved about our percentage, so it's better. They had $1.13 million that was given back to the state messed up on. They took about 400,000 of that, put it into some other things that they had cut before and 600 was applied toward the total budget. So it worked out pretty good in our favor. Consent agenda items. There was resignation of Hannah Grant, Grade 1 Teacher at KES. Resignation of Fred Hollinsby, History Teacher at the High School. Nomination of Mary Donery, Spanish Teacher at KCS, Salary of $45,009. Superintendent Report, Ms. Bernhardt gave an update on the Math Committee. If you recall, through all the various testings over the years that have done, math has kind of lagged behind a little bit and they've recognized that. So they've put out a new math curriculum. Hopefully that math curriculum will help increase and will make those scores a little bit better. There was a discussion on the ESEA 2023-2024 Proposed Use of Funding. This is really the No Child Left Behind Act and they have to report on that funding every year on, you know, how they're going to spend that money. So they reported on that. They also reported on the alternate educational vehicle purchase. They were looking to purchase two vans and they put out RFPs and they've got no response back. The RFPs really, they got no response back because they asked, you know, can you, can you hold until a meeting? And nobody wants to hold. Nobody wants, so they approved funding so that if they find a van, they can go out and purchase two vans. Committee Reports. Art gave an update on the Curriculum Committee. Dawn gave an update on the Human Resources. She talked about Dr. Cooper's Performance Evaluation, which is coming up on May 1st. Talked a little bit about the stipend program, they're reviewing that. And Family, Family U and then the new board, new board member onboarding. I did ask about the onboarding, just to make sure that this appointee that we're gonna put in for a couple of months, make sure that they get the onboarding and they had planned, they definitely planned on doing that. Ken gave an update on the facilities for recycling at KHS. He talked a little bit about the kitchen renovations at KCS. And the sports complex has gotten some delays. Various reasons, weather supplies and what have you. So there will be no spring sports. They were hoping to get spring sports this year. That's not going to happen, but they're hoping everything will get done this summer and they'll start fall sports. Also talked about the Department of Homeland and Security. It will be coming in at some point in time and basically do a full assessment of all of their emergency procedures and, you know, what they're doing and come up with some suggestions or what have you if they need. Erin gave an update from the Board Chair. She read a letter, a personal letter on the happenings that had happened on, on the board member of the past week or two prior. She talked a little bit about that and then we adjourned at 7:46 PM. Is that, any questions? Good. Okay. Managers Report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just to give you an update on some of the things that we've been dealing with over the past week. Just to let you know, on Friday, our Attorney and the Code Officer went to District Court to, to ask for the Administrative Inspection Warrant for 159 Proctor Road. That was granted. We had 10 days, we now have 10 days to, to exercise our ability to, with the warrant. So we've coordinated, because Jim's on vacation come Wednesday of this week. So tomorrow, there'll be the Fire Department Code Officer, Electrician. We're going to have the Sheriff's Office hopefully come along and at 9 o'clock, they're going to go down and, and inspect and take some photographs and report back what they, they find at that point. So once we get that completed, we'll have to see what our next step will be at that particular juncture.
Who's going to be there again?
The Code Officer, one of the Deputy Chiefs from the Fire Department. Our, the Commercial Electro, Electrical Inspector that we have. He's going, he's given some of his time. I was going to try to get a structural engineer, but the company I reached out to last week doesn't do it. And then the company I reached out today hasn't returned my call. So I think short notice wouldn't get them on board. But talking to Code, he doesn't feel it's going to be necessary for his report. I spoke to the Trustee of the tax property that we have on Deer Run, indicate to me that they'll be going to the, to a bank or a financial institution to try to borrow the money needed to in order to complete the transaction and getting the property back into the trust's name. So that happened late last week. I got a correspondence from, from the trustee. So we'll wait till the end of the week and see what we get and then we'll move from there. But hopefully we have some positive results with our request. And wanted to let you all know, after 33 years of service to the, to the town, Roger Tashero has submitted his resignation to me effective April 27th of this month. So anybody who knows, who knows Roger, he's a valuable employee of ours and really, we're really going to miss him, but he feels it's time to, to move on. And if you remember, I think he wanted to do it last year, but because of our shortage and plow drivers in the winter that we were experiencing, he held off until, until the spring. So he's indicated to, to all of us town officials that he's spoken to, that he, he does not prefer to have any flamboyant retirement party or anything to that, to that extent. So we'll honor it as best we can, but I'm, I'm sure that we'll do something to, to assist him and wish him luck. I did talk to him about perhaps consulting or providing some services and he's, he's in more than favorable to coming and assisting or helping when he, when he has to. Right now, he's the only one that we have who has a license to inspect heavy equipment for us. So he's inspected our fire trucks to date and I think he'll come back and do an inspection on a, on the rec bus and some of our heavy equipment when the time comes. So we hope, hopefully we can get him to do a couple of other things for us when we need to.
We, we can certainly define the definition of flamboyant. I, I will have to say that I, I'm sorry, I'm glad for Roger, but I'm sorry to see him go. He's been a huge, huge asset to this town and gosh, you know, there'll be some huge shoes to fill, that's for sure. I'm going to miss him greatly. Wish him all the best.
I think we all do. And I wanted to report out that we did receive a, a petition for road acceptance. I think I alluded to it at your Budget Board Meeting. The people that live or on Conifer Way, they belong to the White Pine Owners Association. They have, they have gathered the necessary signatures to, to push a question on the road to the annual town meeting as a petition warrant article to accept the road. So I have the paperwork here. I'm sure we'll put it on. It's all been certified by the clerk. I'm sure that we'll put it on as a warrant article. And if you recall, we, we do have some reservations to Conifer Way in reference to it being accepted as a town road. So I'm sure that debate will come up at the, at the town meeting and perhaps at the public hearing when we, well, there won't be a public hearing because it will be just at an open town meeting. So, but our issues hadn't, weren't specifically on the road per se. It was on the culverts that went into the driveways that went off the private, went off the road. They were, they weren't the size that was, that identified within the ordinance. So there'll be a report, we'll have a report that we could share with, with the public. But in essence, this is folks exercising their, their rights to, to petition for, for approval. So we'll have to wait to see.
What does the issues with the culverts, what problem does that propose for the town?
Well, once, once the road is accepted, those culverts become our responsibility. So if they fail at any time, we're responsible for, for replacing them. And that happens to any private road or any public road that is a culvert that goes into a driveway. At that point, the town takes responsibility of that. So if it, it clogs or it needs to be replaced or, or something occurs, then it's our responsibility. So our issue here was that, that they were substandard. They weren't the size that was required. As a result of that, there's an opposition by staff on accepting the road.
So if it was built to town standard, then the culvert should have been the right size, right?
Correct.
So if it's not built to town standard, how can we even put it on the warrant if it's not built to town standard?
Folks have the right to petition.
But doesn't it, don't, doesn't the ordinance say that it's got to be built to town standard?
Yeah, it's a, that's an interesting take on it, whether or not it can or cannot be moved forward. I do know that when it was initially built, the plans indicated it was not become public, but I'm not sure how far that goes, but everything that we've told the, the Owners Association to do, they've done. So here's the petition. So if it's legal or not legal, I guess I'll have to get a question on that and I'll let, I'll let those folks know that we're requesting that answer.
Next item is Tiff Capture Committee.
Yeah, I just want to, we need to schedule a meeting. I didn't know if you wanted to meet this week sometime. Or if you want to wait until next week to, to bring that together. I have, as I indicated at the Budget Board Meeting, excuse me, we do have some options that were provided to us by the Attorney. So we may want to discuss that and then move forward with that. So if you have a date or if you want me to pick a date, that's fine too.
I mean, it's got to go to the, the state, so the sooner that we, we meet, probably the better, right?
That's, that's fine with me. We can, we can meet. You want to meet Thursday? I'll put out a blurb on, after tonight's meeting that we'll meet on Thursday. Yeah.
Yeah, Thursday's better for me. I'm, I can't on Wednesday, so, but. Yeah, 7:00 PM.
So that's Thursday, the 13th.
All right, business. We're going to wait for that, that article, right? We want to discuss.
Right, Mr. The resident Alan Izarello will, in Zarelo, will not be here until.
Is that Mr. Izarello right?
I don't believe it is.
Okay.
We'll not be here until probably 7:30 or so. So, you know, once we get into the interviews, we'll be able to curve up some time.
Yep, okay, good. Next item is approval of payable warrant. By Velma. Seconded by Jason. Any other discussion? All those in favor? We've kind of breezed through this pretty quick. You're Ms. Girth, right? Okay. So the board's got any other items? We got a few minutes? If the board has any other items, we can address those now. If not, we can start our interviews. Fair enough. Okay, so I'm, I'm not sure of who other members of the audience are, but I would ask that if, if anybody else is here that is on the docket for interviews, that you please step out and enjoy the sun for a little bit. Thank you. Folks, ready? Step on up or have a seat. And make sure the mic is on.
I think I turned it on. The red, the green light should be on. Was it on?
Green light is on.
Yes. So we'll start off, first of all, thank you for having, for interest in being an RSU 21 Board Member. We will interview each applicant individually with seven questions. And as you speak, we will more than likely be taking notes, okay?
Of course.
If there are any members of the audience that are present, we will not be entertaining any questions or comments from them. Once your interview is done, you're free to stay as a member of the general public. Once all interviews are complete, the Select Board will continue their normal meetings. And then the last agenda will be, item will be an executive session where we will discuss the interviews. Hopefully we'll come out of that with an individual, we'll make a motion after that to accept that individual. Lastly, this is a role not to be taken lightly. It's a huge commitment, okay? You may become an RSU 21 Board Director member that will serve in the best interest of the children of Kennebunk, Kennebunk Board in Rundle. Prior to your taking your seat on the board, you'll be asked to read and accept the RSU 21 Policy BCA, which is a Board Member Court of Ethics. Please read this document thoroughly and understand its intent. We'll start with the questions and at the very end, if you have any questions for us, we'll entertain them at that point.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
A second here. Okay, so knowing this is an interim position, why did you volunteer your service?
Absolutely. So I volunteered because I'm a resident and I'm a mom. My son will be a member of the class of 2037. And thinking about that and the other children of our community, we, they're in a really fast-moving, a global and a challenging environment, right? So I'm really interested in, in being engaged in the process of formulating what they're, what's going on in their school system and their school program. I think it's going to be pivotal to create a program that creates competitive kids so that when they exit our walls, they're able to compete in the world that I just described, right? So I also really am up for the challenge. I think that there's so much potential for me to bring the set of skills that I've acquired to this diverse and really competent board. And I'm excited at the prospect of working with them and being a part of the system.
You might have thrown that in what you would ask, mention, but what motivated you for now?
For, for the interim, you mean?
Yeah.
Just really the need. I want to serve my community. I do intend to run in the June election as well, but I really see this as an opportunity to get an early start, to get to know the community. And I've already started doing that, right? It's really the people I've met in the last month or so have been just fantastic and they've continued to drive my motivation for being here interviewing with you tonight.
Good. Tell us a little bit about your previous public contributions, if any, even if they're not related to the Town of Rundle or RSU 21 directly.
Absolutely. So this would be my first public appointment as well as first public elected position if success comes to me in June. I will say that I have a background in the insurance industry, so I am very well-versed in regulation, both from a state perspective and a federal perspective. And I've also held positions at the University of Maine. These are elected positions within that, within the campus, right? So it's not, you know, town or statewide, but I did participate in our Executive Board for the sorority that I was in, as well as the Pan-Hellenic Board for the University of Maine Greek Life.
What is your understanding of your role as a member of the RSU 21 Board of Directors?
Absolutely. So I think first and foremost, you're a voice and an advocate for the community. I also believe that a Board Director or a Board Member is setting the standard for educational success and then also tasked with measuring its success, right? So held to a high standard and rightfully so. I also believe that we're responsible for a lot of the policy creation that's going into the day-to-day of the work that's actually being done by the folks on the ground, our faculty, our staff and our students. So I think a Board Member should be taking the voice of the community, the voice of the staff and the voice of the student into consideration. And then finally, they're also tasked with the hefty goal of budgeting and finance. And so I think for me, the, the three most key terms that come to mind is managing that responsibility ethically, efficiently and also transparently.
Okay. What knowledge and skills do you bring to the board?
Yeah, so a little bit of background and I won't belabor this because I have it on my application as well, but I have a Bachelor of Arts degree from the University of Maine. I also have a Master's of Science in Business and Insurance from the Boston University. I'm currently employed with a major insurance carrier, a major property and casualty insurance carrier, and I have been for several years. And through that experience, I've really been able to develop key skills that I think allow me to serve this board in a really influential way. Some of those are critical thinking and a problem-solving mindset. I also possess project management and data analytics expertise, so really diving into the efficiency and transparency of some of the issues that the School Board would face, as well as, excuse me, sorry. I've also been extensively trained in diversity, equity, inclusion through my corporation. I think it's really important that our student and our staff are able to bring their whole selves to the building and to our community. And I think that just helps us be a stronger and, and a better community with different ideas and varied perspectives. And I think finally, my general business acumen that I've obtained over years of my career, including negotiating goals, communicating those goals and just overall collaboration with a variety of stakeholders.
What do you think it will take for you to become an effective and successful School Board Member?
So I think it'll, there's a couple of key things that come to mind. The first one is listening. I think an effective School Board Member is going to have to come to the table willing to listen and willing to be open-minded to different perspectives and different views. And I think they're, they need to be willing to engage the members of the community and then the members of the school district to, to really be able to make effective decisions. My plan would be to not only engage with the community, but also my fellow Board Directors, as well as educational experts. I understand that there are going to be areas where I am not an expert and I will rely heavily on those that do the job day in and day out to help me formulate a foundation of decision-making. The second thing for me would be the learning process. I think a couple of key things that I can identify off the top of my head are, what are the district's priorities? Kind of getting a gauge of where they're at and what their goals are. Understanding the laws and regulations set forth by the State of Maine regarding education. And then finally, you know, what, what is the vision for the future and how can I contribute to that?
What, what issue do you see as a major priorities for the school board?
I think, you know, I am aware of some of the, the more recent things that have come up publicly, right? And I understand the history that RSU 21 has. We moved here to Rundle specifically to be involved in this community. I was actually fortunate enough to visit the Meldredal Day School just a couple of days ago, and the principal gave me a tour of that school. One of the things that really stood out to me was they have a STEM lab for kindergartners. So I think the reputation that RSU 21 has and, and will continue to have shouldn't be impacted by this one incident. And what I plan to be is upholding that reputation with many of the things that I just described to you. And so like I said, the, I, I understand what this community has to offer, and I really want to be a, a servant to that and continue to make that prosper.
Can you make the necessary time commitment to serve on the board?
Great question. Absolutely. Yeah, and I feel confident in that. And I know that this is a, this is a big commitment of my time, my resources, and my energy. I think two key goals of mine is to be visible in the community, but also be available to the community. I want to really immerse myself and get to know the different stakeholders that make up RSU 21. I have a fantastic family support system at home, and I also have a fantastic employer who has provided me the opportunity to have flexible work arrangements. And I feel really confident that I have the capacity to take on this endeavor.
So you have an opportunity to add any additional information about yourself that you feel may help us in knowing you a bit better, and also any questions that you have for this board or the process?
Absolutely. I think, for me, I, I understand the value of public education, and I really think that it's, it's the pillar of any community, right? And I, for me, I think just to round out this interview, I'm just so passionate about contributing back to my community and contributing in any way that I can to make things good and make things better. That's my goal. That's, I guess, as succinct as I can put it, but I'm really excited at this opportunity, and I just appreciate all of your time.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next one is Ms. Tajero. Do you want me to? I don't know if that was her or not. I'm not quite sure. All right. I'll walk out and grab her. Want to get started with her? Okay.
Right.
Knowing this is an interim position, why did you volunteer?
Um, well, initially, I didn't have a huge amount of interest in joining the school board, but after the most recent events, felt like the community needed somebody to step up and volunteer and serve the best interests of the children of this community. I am a mom of two daughters, one currently in first grade, and my youngest will be going into pre-K in the fall. So that has driven me to put myself out there and possibly take on this role as RSU 21 school board member.
Yeah, I keep trying to say that, but what motivated you now?
Um, just being a parent, I have been a resident of Rundle for the last 10 to 11 years. I, my husband grew up here. We have deep ties to this community. We purchased his parents' home, so we currently reside where he grew up. And I think that our connection to this community means a lot to me, and I want to continue to serve to the best of my abilities and do what's best for my kids and the rest of the children of this district. I am. I'll be turning in my papers tomorrow. Um, I can't say that I have any public contributions. I do sit on a couple of boards for some nonprofit groups. So I work at the Non-Antum Resort in Kennebunk Port. I work in sales, so I sit on a board for the Maine Motor Coach Network. So I work pretty tightly with them in order to bring motor coach business into the state of Maine. So I do volunteer my time with them, and I also sit on a board for a Women Leaders in Travel group. We bring women that work in the hospitality industry to a annual retreat. So that's a nonprofit as well to sort of develop the professional women in the hospitality industry. So I think that that experience could serve me well.
What is your understanding of your role?
Um, well, I think that it is a huge role to take on in serving the best interests of the kids of this community. One of my biggest tasks, I think, would be to really dive into creating a deeper connection between parents and educators. I think that is so important. I don't always think that parents know how much goes in to what the educators are doing day-to-day. So I think communication is huge, and I would really push, push for that. Well, I think that in all of my experience working at the Non-Antum, I bring a lot of different skill sets. I have worked with many different personality types, as you can well imagine, working with the public. So I think that having to have a level head in times of, you know, confusion and upset is important. I have excellent communication skills. I'm pretty reasonable. I listen to both sides. I take it all in and make my decision from there. I think communication is the number one, the number one thing here. Communicating with the other members of the school board, communicating with the community, making sure that there is an open line of communication between the board and community members. I think that's really the only way to be an effective board member. Um, like I said, I think that connection between, you know, parents and educators is huge for me. As a parent, I see it myself. I don't always get all the information that I'm looking for. I want there to be more open communication, more transparency, more participation from the parents in the school district. I also just joined the PTO for ML Day, so working on that currently there, that's been sort of a dying organization after the pandemic. They haven't had a lot of participation. So we're trying to really bring that back and, and get the parents more involved, and I think that's, that's really important. I can. I, I finally feel now that my kids are both going to be in school, I have the mental capacity, the time capacity to offer up to this. Um, I think that, I just want to let you know that I'm really passionate about this. Even though it wasn't on my radar, you know, a few months ago, I have really dived deep into this. I've, you know, started reading a Maine School Board Association handbook and really gotten into things and tried to, you know, educate myself. I obviously still have a lot to learn, but I'm willing to put in the work and would gladly serve as a board member for this district. I don't think so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, we are running ahead of schedule, so that's good. So if you are ready, step on up.
Hello, I'm Kirsten Shapiro.
Okay.
Um, hi.
Um, hold on, let me just write this down here. Okay, so we thank you for your interest in becoming an RSU 21 board member. We will interview each applicant individually, and we will more likely be taking notes as, as you speak, okay? There, there are members of the audience that are here. We will not be entertaining any questions or any comments from members of the audience. Once your interview is done, you're free to stay as a member of the audience. Once all interviews are complete, the select board will continue on with their normal business. The last agenda item is executive session. We will go into executive session to discuss the interviews. And if everything works out okay, we'll come out of that with making a motion to appoint an individual. Lastly, this is a role not to be taken lightly. This is a huge commitment. You may become an RSU Board of Director member that will serve in the best interest, interest of the children of Kennebunk, Kennebunk Port and Rundle. Prior to taking, taking a seat on the board, you will be asked to read and accept RSU 21 Policy BCA, which is Board Member Court of Ethics. Please read this document thoroughly and understand its intent. With that said, we'll start with the questions. We'll ask the seven questions. At the end, there'll be an opportunity if you have any questions yourself on whatever the whole process. So knowing this is an interim position, why did you volunteer your service?
Um, so I have run for public office before, and I believe very deeply, and I'm very committed to the idea of public service. I also, you know, as I graduated from Kennebunk High School and have, after 20 years, moved back here to raise my family, so the sense of community and the wanting to be a part of building that sense of community and nurturing it is a natural step forward. I also have three kids, well, two right now, but one more, um, who will be in the, in the public school system. So along with the need and the desire to volunteer and, and serve publicly, I think that, you know, having kids directly affected by policies that are being made in the here and now, especially like I know the new math initiative is coming up. I knew they did a new reading initiative a couple of years ago, so knowing that those changes and the progress that's made in those areas is going to directly affect my kids and how they go through school adds like an extra degree of levity to wanting to serve.
What motivated you now?
I mean, I was already going to pull papers. I'm friends with Dawn, and she was like, oh, you should definitely run for school, school board. So I had already, I already knew that Ken was stepping down over the summer. And unfortunately, Dawn too, because I would have loved to have served with her. But yeah, so I already had kind of planned on running and, you know, I think when the position opened up, for me, it was, it made sense. I've already tried to serve publicly, and I've been really involved. We lived previously in Beverly, Massachusetts. I was really involved in their master planning and some of their board, planning board meetings. So it was a normal bit for me. And I also have done a Merge Massachusetts, which helps people who want to serve publicly and learn how to run for office, and also learn how to serve and how to write policy and, and how policy can affect both positively and negatively the population that they're making the policy for.
Okay. You've mentioned this a little bit already, but tell us a little bit about your previous, previous public contribution, if any, even if they are not related to the town of Rundle or RSU 21 directly.
Right. Um, well, I've been a yoga teacher for 12 years, which might seem like a a weird way to sort of serve the community, but if you've ever been to a studio or been in the practice with people, it's a very like community-based idea and really meant to be supportive of those around you, those in your community as a space to, you know, discuss ideas and feel non, in a non-judgmental atmosphere, feel that you can express yourself and also come to solutions or solve problems in your own life personally or in the broader community. So in that way, I feel it's a very natural step to sort of, I think, in the board, on, on a school board, there's a need to really listen to the community and listen in a, from a space of non-judgment, so that you can hear all of the perspectives, and the more perspectives that you can add to your problem solving, the broader the problem solving will be. So if you're making solutions that really try to cover as much of the swath of the population as it can, then you're, you're sort of making solutions that are going to hopefully please as many members of the community as possible, while, while knowing and understanding that you cannot please and, and make everyone happy with every decision.
What is your understanding of your role as a member of RSU 21 Board of Directors?
Oh, man. Having been to their last meeting, I think the role is always broader than you think it's going to be. So it's probably a good way to go into anything is understanding that, you know, you want to serve the community. You want to do what's best for the, the kids in the schools and the administrators and the staff, while being mindful of taxes on the community and the, and your neighbors. But I think that, I think you get in what you put out, for sure, and I think the role requires a pretty big time commitment, especially for a volunteer, you know, board. I think that there's a lot of clear intention and how their function- clear intention and how they're functioning um based on all the initiatives and all of the the committee assignments and, and how those committees are functioning right now. Um, I think that it's a, you know, it's a time commitment. Um, and it can be a bigger time commitment if you want to invest more. Um, and so I'm thankful that I am a stay-at-home parent right now. Um, so I have a little bit more time to give. Um, but yeah, I think, you know, what do they do? I, I mean, anything from, obviously they're in charge of reviewing the superintendent, um parliamentary procedures and understanding those, which can be um sort of a word jumble for anybody, I think, who's never done it before, um, all the way to deciding what initiatives, you know, we should be putting taxpayer money into to looking over the budget that the superintendent has proposed and making sure that if there are changes in that budget that they're well thought about. I know that recently there was a change in our HR and um payroll, which is good and positive, but definitely is a financial burden to the taxpayer and to the budget. And, you know, those are all things that you have to weigh. I think, you know, the last meeting even, there's like a, there's a, one of the programs where they're trying to get a s- a school bus and I know there's like all the logistics of what you need to fill out and RFP and then the realities of living in, you know, 2023 and needing to move forward and and get things done and recognize that sometimes, you know, the bureaucracy can function well and sometimes you have to find ways to move around it in order to provide what the community needs.
What knowledge and skills do you bring to the board?
I don't know. Um, I have a master's in music, so I definitely have, I, I would say a pretty broad perspective on the arts and how the arts can affect uh child's education. I grew up in the community and went to the schools here. Um, and I was low income when I did that, so I think I offer a big perspective on what it feels like to grow up in, I would say, what is an affluent community that has a very uh well-known and and fantastic school district and what it feels like to come from a lower-income family moving into that school district where you're sort of, for the most part, dealing with people who are income-wise doing better than you are. Um, I played organized sports through the schools and then also in college, I was a competitive athlete. So I definitely understand that need to recognize that there are students that are balancing academics and balancing uh pursuit of athletics and that those can be things that nurture each other. Um, like, I've definitely done public service and trained for public service, so I feel really confident, especially in such a short ti- slice of time, that I would be able to serve the community in a functional way and not just a plain catch-up way for the next two months. Um, I don't know, I'm pretty even-tempered. Um, I also, yeah, I'm additionally, I, I, I'm a doula, trained doula, and I do a lot of birth advocacy, so in general, I would say I'm used to trying to hold space that's non-judgmental and provides people time to offer their perspective. Um, and really trying to listen to what that perspective is before jumping to the answer.
Okay. What do you think it will take for you to become an effective and successful school board member?
Hmm. Um, I think an awareness of my own intention. Um, I find I'm most successful in my life when I stay grounded. Um, I feel pretty grounded uh physically right now, tell you that. Um, I feel, uh, I feel very grounded by my family and um the choice to move here was a a couple-year-long decision and and hunt and search. And so I feel very like committed to living here and being in this community and building my community, my personal community, but also the broader community. So I think those, I always find the more I give in to something like that, the more I put into that sense of um pride that I take in relationship building, the more that I will get out of it and the more success I'll have.
Uh, what issues do you see as major priorities for the school board?
I don't know. I don't know that I know yet. Um, I know that they're reviewing Dr. Cooper. Um, so I think in the short term, obviously that's sort of high on the list is, is figuring out how we've moved uh as a school district over the last three years. Um, I think communication is really important, uh whether that's with other board members or also with the community, uh, making sure that, you know, what, what we are doing is feels like it's not sort of behind closed doors, even though you make, you make meetings available, you put them on Zoom, you offer links, and that doesn't mean that necessarily people are feeling like they're being heard and and feeling like they're learning. So I think that there is a um, a level of gravity that you should bring to trying to reach out to your community members to try to help them understand what's going on and how they can be involved, or if they're not happy with something, what they can do to be, you know, make sure their voice is heard. So tell me the question again, just so I make sure I'm
What issues do you see as a major priorities for the school board?
Um, I, I think one of the things I love about local public service is that it, it's supposed to be an intentionally nonpartisan. Um, but I would be lying if I said it's not a reality that um the political landscape of our country is in everything. Um, and I think that it's always tough for select boards, for school boards um to, you know, manage getting the real work done that like has to get done on a yearly, daily, weekly basis with budgets and taxes and uh like trainings and school reforms and the HR switch that they did. All of those things need time and attention, but there's an overarching hope and I think challenge for local elective officials to figure out how we can build community around ideas that we all love and understand. And I think especially children are a very good space to find common ground and good space to build that sense that like we are not on one side or the other, but we are, we are all here to support our neighbors and here to support the children in our school district and the teachers who are helping them thrive so well.
Okay. Can you make the necessary time commitment to serve on the board? Huge commitment.
Yeah, yeah, huge. Well, I guess my question, I would ask the question back, like, what do you think the time commitment is? Like on an hourly level? Because I think that, yeah, I guess what do you think the time commitment is? Because I think there's meetings and there's emails and then there's, you know, mental space and um hoping to do the additional work of interacting with the community so that you can do a better job. So I, I think um there's a mystery of like how many hours it is if you break it down into hours.
Yeah, well, I can't tell you how many hours, but you know, that you have, you have the regular meetings and then you've got subcommittees and, you know, you're expected to be on various subcommittees.
Right.
And those meetings happen sometimes at seven thirty in the morning, uh, you know, so there's, there's different times that they have these meetings, you know, there's, there's a communications, there's HR committee, there's finance committee, there's facilities committees, um, plus any other uh type of committees that come up throughout the year. So it's, it's more than
It's not two hours.
Every two weeks.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not concerned about the, the physical time. Um, I'm not even concerned about the emotional time. Uh, I think that we don't, I feel very fortunate. My husband works from home and, you know, is semi-retired, I would say. So as far as like childcare, I'm not worried about that being an issue. I think it is really important that women with children or caretakers of children serve in public office. It's, it's seriously lacking across the country, across the board. And I'm really happy to see that two of the women behind me also have young children. I think that perspective is not in the room, um, and it's in the room because of this idea of time or um the burden of having children getting in the way. Um, I could go into a whole long blurb about how we don't get public fund. We can't use funds from our campaigns to run for office, to have childcare, which is really messed up. Um, but in general, I think it's a perspective that's really lacking and something that three of us have stepped for, at least three that I know of have stepped forward to try to make that commitment. So I think um there's no better juggler prioritizing time and energy than a mom. Um, and so I feel very confident in my ability to do that, regardless of what the position is or the, or the capacity with which it fills my life.
Okay. Um, he- here's your opportunity to um add any additional information about yourself, which you feel may help or any questions that we can ask that you have, that we can answer that you have.
Um, you know, I think it's, I think you guys are in a tough spot. Uh, it's a couple of months. I hope that everybody runs. I'm really happy that everyone has pulled papers. Uh, I'm happy that the community is like, you know, hey, we, we gotta like get involved here if we don't want things like this to repeat themselves. Um, and so I don't envy the position that you are in. I'm, I'm really happy as a community member to have other people who have pulled papers and have put their names in today. So I feel that's really promising to me for the district um and for Arundel. Um, I don't really think I have any questions other than, you know, to say thank you and we all appreciate your time and understand that, you know, it's for a couple of months and hopefully we're all, we'll all come back and and be here in the summer on the ballot.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy's outside. Yeah, she can come in. Yep, yep, absolutely. Okay, so um we thank you for um becoming an RSU, for your interest in becoming an RSU 21 board member. Uh, uh, we have been interviewing, we'll continue to in- uh interview each applicant um individually with seven questions. Uh, as you speak, we will more than likely be taking notes. Um, there are members of the audience. Uh, we are not taking, we're not entertaining any questions or comments from members of the audience. Once your interview is done, you're free to stay uh for the rest of the meeting and become a member of the general public. Once all interviews are complete, the select board will continue on with the, the rest of their meeting. Our last agenda item is executive session. We'll go into executive session to discuss um all of these interviews. Hopefully, we will come out of executive session and have a motion to appoint one of the individuals that we interviewed tonight. Uh, lastly, um, this is a role that is not to be taken lightly. It is a huge commitment. You may become an RSU 21 Board of Directors members that will serve in the best children of the best interest of the children of Kennebunk, Kennebunk Port and Arundel. Prior to taking a seat on the board, you'll be asked to read and accept RSU 21 Policy BCA, which is Board Member Code of Ethics. Please read this document thoroughly and understand its intent. We'll ask you the questions. At the very end, there'll be an opportunity if you have any uh questions yourself or for um more additional information. And for the record, um, Ms. Bensmer, Kathy Bensmer is, I didn't say the name, the other names are the other ones, but just want to make sure that. Okay, so knowing this is an interim position, why did you volunteer your services?
Good question. Um, I thought this would be a great opportunity to start seeing what goes into um running a school board. Because this is a short-term commitment, right? It would be a, a good opportunity to see how this works so that if I want to make a longer-term commitment, then um I would know what I was getting into. The um, I thought that this commitment was for these few months and another year. Am I wrong about that?
No, it's just for, it's just for the two months and then um you would have to be on the ballot.
Fulfilling the whole of his, his term.
No.
Um, so the other part of wanting to be part of the school board is to um question about how how these decisions are made. Are all of these decisions being made in the best interest of our children?
Okay, um, what motivated, you might have already stated it, but what motivated you now?
I had been in the school system for a long time, but on the other end. And so now is an opportunity to, to be on the policymaking part of it, to be um um checking, um, having a checks and balance for um the policies and the decisions that are made um and what's best for our kids. And I think it should always come down to is what's best for our kids.
You kind of already stated it, but are you um entertaining a run for this elected position in June?
Yes.
Tell us a little bit about your previous public contributions, um if any, even if they're not related to the town of Arundel or RSU 21 directly.
Well, I taught in our, the district for, I'm, I'm not going to say how many years. And uh, and so in, in that capacity, I was involved in a lot of school activities and, and different things. Um, I've worked for the town um at elections for a number of years until the COVID started. And um just, just general um helping on playground things with the PTA and doing um not necessarily belonging to committees, but working on um with committees to do things for the town.
Okay. What is your understanding of your role as a member of the RSU 21 Board of Directors?
My, I, my role would be to question and to ask questions about what things are, or why things are being done. I think the, the role of the school board is to set policy for, for the school, to um oversee the management of all the different parts of the, this, the school, you know, whether it's the, the maintenance or the transportation and all those different things. This, the school board has to um factor in all of those things and, and set policy for all of those areas.
Okay. Uh, what knowledge and skills do you bring to the board?
Like I said, I was in the other side for a number of years, so um I, I bring that perspective um from um what the school board has done in the past and what, what they want to be doing in the future from the, the teacher's point of view.
Okay. What do you think it will take for you to become an effective and successful school board member?
Um, I think I've already said that I see what I would like to see myself doing is asking questions that make the whole school board think about um how, why are we making these decisions? And are these decisions affecting our children um positively? Are they affecting our teachers positively? Are they affecting our parents positively and then ultimately the towns? All three towns.
What issues do you see as major priorities for the school board?
Um, right now, I think finance. I think that is, that is a big um, a big challenge for our, for our school board. Um, prices are not what they used to be and things are, but I think that we have areas that are, there is probably waste that we could probably, you know, look at and be more diligent and, and more effective in spending our money.
Can you make the necessary time and commitment to serve on the school board?
Yes.
As a retired teacher, yeah.
As a retired person, yes.
You have an opportunity to add any additional information about yourself, which you feel may help the select board in knowing you a little bit better or any questions that you would have for us.
You answered my question about the commitment, you know, the, the term, right? And um, no, then I think I have a fair understanding and um um, I want to do um right by the taxpayers of Arundel um as well as all the children of Kennybunk, Kennybunk Port and Arundel.
Very good. There's nothing else. We thank you very much.
Do I need to stay? Do I need to stay?
You don't have to. You don't have to. Yep, it's up to you.
I have bedtime.
Thank you very much for coming in. Yeah, we're going to take, uh, we're going to take a recess until, uh, till Mr. Bassett shows up. Yeah. It's at, uh, sub-